Good morning, everyone. Welcome me to our open organizational meeting and pursuant to Florida statute, I'll be acting, the acting secretary for this portion of it. I'd ask for everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Ms. Harrison to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This time we're going to do our oath of office. I'd like to ask Ms. Debbie Holly, Donna Mills, and Troy Ingersoll if they would go down to the, to the front and School Board Attorney, Mr. Dan Harrell, will administer the oath of office to our board members.
I, Debbie Holly, do solemnly swear.
I, Debbie Holly, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
He just has to hold the Bible for you to hold, place your left hand on it. I, Donna Mills, do solemnly swear.
I, Donna Mills, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
Of the, of the St. Lucy County School Board.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I, Troy Ingersoll, do solemnly swear.
I, Troy Ingersoll, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I, Troy Ingersoll, do solemnly swear.
I, Troy Ingersoll, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the School Board of St. Lucy County.
Of the, of the St. Lucy County School Board.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to call for nominations and a vote for chairman. Ms. Hensley?
I recommend Debbie Holly become our chair.
You got a nomination for Debbie Holly? Anybody, anyone else? Anyone else? All nominations are received. Can I call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No opposition. Congratulations, Ms. Holly.
First extend my thanks to my fellow board members for your vote of confidence and also to Dr. Mills for leading us for the past year in the position of chair. We appreciate your leadership and thank you full-heartedly.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
I will now ask for nominations for vice chair for the coming year.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Catherine Hensley?
Any others? Okay, we have Ms. Hensley nominated for vice chair. I hear no other nominees on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome, Madam Vice Chair. Our next order of business in the reorg is the appointment of members to various committees. I would like to suggest that everyone retain their current seat on the committees that they are serving on unless there is anyone that has any objection to that. Okay, we will all then maintain the, the seats that we hold on our community boards and go forth from there. Thank you all for your service on those. It's, there's eighteen various committees listed here, but there are significantly more than that that we all serve on throughout the community and it's, it's good to have our representation throughout and I appreciate your service on those committees as well. Our next order of business is to establish the date, time, and place of our regular school board meetings. I would entertain a motion at this time to proceed with our normal schedule, which would be the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM for our regular meeting, our business meeting, and then the fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 AM for our special meetings, which are our work sessions.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Can you do it? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now we will have the vote on our School Board Attorney, Mr. Harrell. Call for a motion to continue his contract.
I move to retain Mr. Harrell as our School Board Attorney.
Second by Ms. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And from the entire board, Mr. Harrell, thank you for your service to us. We, it's a great comfort to each of us to know you're there and we appreciate it. And you, you do the yeoman's work for miniscule and we appreciate your, your work on our behalf and welcome. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn the organizational meeting and I will now open the St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting. And pass the gavel to Mr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I call this St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting to order with the following members being present. Ms. Debbie Holly, Ms. Carol Hilson, Dr. Donna Mills, Ms. Catherine Hensley, and Mr. Troy Ingersoll. Per Article III of the Articles of incorporation, the sole members of the corporation shall be the members of the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, shall be ex officio members. Therefore, it is appropriate to call for a motion in second that the members of the School Board of St. Lucy County be appointed as the ex officio board members, Board of Directors of the corporation. I call for a motion in second that the members of the School Board of St. Lucy County be appointed as ex officio Board of Directors of the corporation board votes. Can I have a motion?
Second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Passes unanimously. The St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting is adjourned. And now I will open up the St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Board of Directors Meeting. It is now open. I'll call for a motion in a second to name the chairman of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio chairman of the Board of Directors of the corporation and the vice chairman of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio vice chairman of the Board of Directors of the corporation. Can I have a motion in a second? Moved by Dr. Mills?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes. And now, let's see, where are we at here? Now we'll adjourn this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.
Only time the gavel gets to travel so much is at this meeting, isn't it? Back and forth. We will now open the meeting of the regular School Board of St. Lucy County, our November twentieth, twenty eighteen meeting. And welcome to all of you. Thank you for your patience as we go through the, the business of the, of the reorganizational part of our meeting, but want to welcome each of you here today. I know with it being Thanksgiving week, there's a, a lot going on in your lives, but we're pleased to have you here with us and our viewing audience as well. We will now, we have had our pledge, but I would like for us to recite the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter pledge. If you would, we can stay seated and just repeat the Kids at Hope pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Open the public hearing at this time. And Mr. Superintendent, if you would have the recommendation before we see if there are any that might want to address it.
Recommend the board adopt to propose amendments to the School Board Policies Number six point three zero, number six point three oh one, number seven point five two, new policy entitled religious expression in public schools and the adoption of job descriptions as rules.
Okay. The policies have been listed. Are there any in the audience that wish to address any of these policies that are listed? If so, you may come to the mic. Mr. Gotts, I would ask that you state your name and your address, please.
State your name and address. Sounds like every public to be heard that I've ever been to. My name is Mark Gotts, one five four Northwest Magnolia Lakes Boulevard, and that's in Port St. Lucy.
And which policy do you wish to address?
Well, I'm looking at the policies that you have and I find it odd that you don't have anything on your public to be heard, just as approximately what we're doing here. Your policy of having to have a two-week notice for public to be heard stating what you're going to speak about before you can be put on the front end of an agenda, I don't find to be in the spirit of public to be heard, which should be three minutes or five minutes, whatever you decide, but open it up to the public so that they can air their discussion or grievances or whatever they have to say. That's what public to be heard is all about. I find that procedure to be odd, not in the spirit of public to be heard, and I would love to see the board take up that particular policy also along with the other ones that they're talking about now. Thank you.
I would ask that the record reflect that the, speaking from Mr. Gotts did not address any of the policies before us in this public hearing and we will now, are there any's that wish to address specifically? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion for the recommendation for approval from a superintendent.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Second by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And the public hearing portion of the meeting is now closed and we will move on to the rest of our business meeting. Anyone here from CTA to give a report? Okay, seeing none. CWA? Seeing none. We will move then to our consent agenda. Board members, I would ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? It was moved by Ms. Hensley, seconded by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, might we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Board members, are there any items that you wish to have a separate discussion on or pull for separate vote? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And so now we flip over to our superintendent and staff reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to really just do special recognition of our veterans and to honor them. We had some ceremonies in our schools this past week, particularly over at Morningside Elementary, at FK Suite, at Northport K eight, and other schools as well. Many of our, several of our high school J R ROTC programs supported different events and so we just wanted to congratulate them for what they've done and again, thank our veterans for their service to our country. Special thanks to our Lions Club for making the dictionary donations to our elementary students. This past week, I had the opportunity to go out to the airport when they had a groundbreaking for their new, what they call a maintenance rehab and overhaul hangar and Mrs. Hensley was there as well. They gave us a, this is kind of a picture here of, of, it's a real jet and a real hangar. It's not ours. We don't own it, but it's. That's not your private plane? No, it's not our private jet. But anyway, this is, this was presented to, to myself and also to Dr. Massey from the college because we know that there will be, those will be opportunities for training and education for our students and our school centers, particularly as, as we have been doing to, to meet the needs of the community, to be, meet the needs of the, the economics of our community and the growing industries that are there. So it was a very, very nice event out there on the, the side of the airport and I just wanted to share this with the board. We're going to be having this framed and we'll put this up in a prominent place so that folks can see that as well. Got a little show and tell for everybody that's here. Also wanted to, we had an, there was a, there's some neat things that are going on in our school centers all the times and a lot of times the public don't get to see that, but one of the interesting programs is the drone technology program over at Fort Pierce Central. John Shamen with Channel Five did an outstanding story on that and this is where our students use this technology. The, the students were enrolled in the Emory Riddle Aeronautical University Program. They work in collaboration with their sheriff's department to improve safety on campus and it was an excellent, an excellent piece on Channel Five and under the deputy supervision, the students patrol the perimeter and you get up on the roof, they, that day they found an, an open gate and it was immediately closed and so it's just, and this was an idea of our students themselves to help protect themselves and to help protect our schools and it was an outstanding job. Congratulations to Kerry as well for getting that here. We had a kitchen crawl downtown, partnered with Main Street Fort Pierce to connect the businesses to the high and middle school culinary arts programs. That was a huge success. We went to eight restaurants, importicle bakery, Uncle Carlo's Gelato Taco Dry, Taco Dive, not the Drive. That'd be their competition, I guess, if someone had opened up a taco store. Second Street Bistro, Subway Sunrise City Cafe, and the Bradford and the Cake Lady. Also want to congratulate Forest Grove Middle School. Three students were selected for the all-state course and we'll recognize them later on. And also at the next meeting, we'll recognize our principal and AP of the Year, Andrea Popwell from St. Lucy West Centennial is the principal of the year and Samantha Piscopo from Danny McCarty Middle School. And then I know we have several staff members that are here this morning and members of the community and it is Thanksgiving time and we just want to say thank you. Number one, I really want to say heartfelt thanks to, to the board themselves and for the direction and the leadership that they provide for this community. I want to thank our staff members and in particularly to the school centers where the real work is done, to our teachers and to our, to our support staff, our bus drivers, custodians, our cafeterias, our facilities and maintenance firms, everyone that keeps the, the district running. Some really sincere thanks for what you do for us and I know that we don't get a chance to recognize everyone. Hope that everyone has a restful Thanksgiving time with your families. Get back and just do whatever it is you do on Thanksgiving, but take time to, to say some special thanks for the things that we have that we should never take them for granted and for our members that are here as well. Appreciate you coming out and, and doing your first amendment right to, to speak and to, to express the concerns that you have. We welcome you and look forward to hearing from you in a few moments. Thank you. That completes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harrell, do you have a report? Thank you. Board members, Mr. Ingersoll, we'll begin with you.
I just want to thank Donna Mills for an excellent year and her leadership as chairman. Appreciate all you do. Want to thank the community for the opportunity to serve another four years and it's just been a, a great, great month, just all around going to FK. We know some of you as were there with us and some other opportunities to serve. So thank you. Have a merry, merry, happy Christmas.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
She's ready to go now.
I'm ready for Christmas. Wishing them in advance.
We'd have to change the calendar right now.
We did it last time.
So, I know you know this. We should be thankful every day of the week.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the year. I want to thank the community for your vote. I want to thank you for entrusting that we will do what we need to do to run this district smoothly, effectively, and efficiently. And I appreciate that you have the faith in us and myself personally to help this county be the best that it can be. I am thrilled that we have come so far within the last four years of successes. I mean, our career in technology is incredible. We have thirty-nine, thirty-eight different careers throughout this district for our children to choose. That is just wonderful and, and a real success. Also being a B district this year. When I first came on, we were a low C. We are now one point away from an A. That is absolutely incredible and a lot of work has gone into this. We have children from all types and walks of life here in St. Lucy County and we are a very high poverty district. So it proves that when the adults are able to work earnestly in the behalf of our children, what we can do. And I've always said poverty, I, I don't believe poverty is the, 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 the point in which a child will fail. I believe it's just more of a challenge and we've taken on that challenge and I am grateful for everything that each of you have done in this district. And also with our graduation rates, we were in the forty-fifth graduation, lowest graduation rates. We are now fifth. Our African-American students are now third in the state of Florida in graduation rates. Absolutely incredible. Thank you for your work, teachers. You are our first ones in those classrooms and you, I say you are our frontline soldiers and you've done a wonderful job. Thank you administration and district because we know that you are the ones that have trained and have brought us up to where we are at. So just appreciate everything that all of you are doing and I'm very thankful since this is the season of thankfulness, but I think we are thankful every year for what you do every single day. Also want to thank Centennial High School that provided lunch for our leadership group. We had both mayors, Fort Pierce Mayor Linda Hudson and also we had Port St. Lucy Mayor Greg Orback and the school served us not just with absolutely incredible food. The chef said that he had no parts in it. He had the students do every single thing without any input and we are, not only was fed well and first class, those students can open up a restaurant today as partnership in this community and it would be extremely successful. So kudos to their chef and, and what he has taught them, but not only that they feed us physically, but educationally as well. They took us through parts of every food that was served and they gave us background and, and about their, their national, well, state contests that they are part of. It was just incredible. So we want to thank Ms. Popwell and also chef, somebody help me? Chef? Chef Lewis. Oh, you've got to have lunch at Centennial and also to the community. Our schools, our career chef schools, culinary art schools are available during the school hours. If you want to rent them to be able to come and, and do a lunch for your organization or breakfast for your organization, just call the school and you'll get some further details on that and you'll help support us in our effort to educate our children. Thank you and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hilson?
Just want to congratulate Debbie and Donna and Troy. We are a strong team. The Florida School Board Association actually looks at St. Lucy County School Board as a very strong team and you wouldn't realize that unless you visited other counties and got to listen to other school boards that actually have name-calling and curse words and we've experienced some very strange situations and these people are elected to office to represent their constituents and sometimes that's not happening. I also want to thank Mr. Harrell. He is always a shining light to this community and again, we are blessed to have him and you might not know that either unless you go to some of the Florida School Board events where he is a lawyer among lawyers. His name is known throughout the state of Florida as being an extraordinary person in the field that he is in. I just, I want to thank our staff because they, that's where the rubber meets the road. Every staff person, whether it's a custodian, whether it's a bus driver, whether it's a teacher, those are the people that work with our children every day, day after day after day. And you know, if you're a parent, sometimes you look at your own children and think, would you just stop or your grandchildren? But the, just the quality of our staff in the public school system is, is amazing. I just think we're very blessed to have the organization that we have and I, I just want to say a happy and a blessed Thanksgiving to all of you that are out there and to be part of organizations. We have an organization through the Elks Club. There's many, many different organizations that think of the people that may not have a Thanksgiving dinner or a Christmas dinner, so if you're able, think about others that aren't as fortunate as, as you might be this season, throughout the season. But again, thank you and thank you to our community and it said that what you want for your own personal children, we should want for all children in our community and I carry that in my heart because I know what I want for my children and my grandchildren and I want that for all children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Ms. Hensley?
I have several reports because of the committees I'm on, but I'm very pleased that we have our team intact. As Ms. Hilson said, we are looked as to, as one of the strongest boards in the state. We have had input from other entities outside our state as well as outside of our country on how we do business and that is totally due to the fantastic staff we have. And when I get emails or messages that say, we can't be doing what we're doing, our kids can't be that successful, there's very little response except that yes, we can, yes, we are, and yes, the kids are being successful. Because of all the interest in the well-being of our children as a whole, for the Treasure Coast Council, local governments, we've invited a speaker to come to talk about the positive things that are going on with children in our four county area, giving examples of how that needle can be moved for the benefit of the community as a whole. Also, the Florida Children's Council is in the midst of hiring a new executive director. Our previous executive director went to work for preschool education at the Lassenter Institute, the University of Florida, which is going to serve our kids well in a different venue. The Transportation Planning Organization, our local coordinating board met last week. We're beginning our five-year study and we need community input on what is best for transportation for the disadvantaged. Disadvantaged has a federal definition, but in our county, everybody gets to ride the mass transit free at this point. So we'll be looking at ways to increase that, increase sidewalks, that sort of thing. Your input is going to be very welcome because that will help phrase how we state things and the frame what we actually ask. and the frame what we actually ask to be put on our five-year, in our twenty-five-year plan. Also, the Early Learning Coalition is in the final steps of finding a permanent home. We've been looking at several things and we are caretakers of the taxpayers' dollars. So, we've been trying to make sure we got the best bang for our buck, so to speak, and been twisting a few arms. So, that should come to resolution hopefully within another week or two. As well as the Families of the Treasure Coast is looking for new homes. That is, used to be our Parent Academy has been restructured. And right now, we're meeting at Children's Services Council's offices. Things are going very, very well. The outreach of that organization, although there's very, very few employees, there's only three, the outreach has been significant. And that is also a kudo to our staff who welcomes them in to do parent training. The Community's Connected for Kids, which is our community-based care organization, we anticipate getting a new direction and some new responsibilities from the state and from the federal government. And to that end, we also are looking for larger headquarters for that group. And we actually, I have, we'll have a contract probably to sign by January for that organization. So, all in all, things are going very, very well for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. As part of my report, I would like to incorporate an action item we have from the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, and that is a vote on the proposed 2019 legislative program. I currently serve as President of the Consortium and we met here in St. Lucie County in early October and came up with the legislative priorities for the consortium group, which is ten counties, the coastal counties of Florida. And Board Members, this has been published and I presume that you all have looked it over, and we would just need a vote. I would entertain a motion to accept. Thank you, Dr. Mills, and thank you, Ms. Hensley, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. This work will now become part of the greater good with the ten members of the consortium. We will work hand-in-hand with our Treasure Coast Work Group as well as with the Florida School Board Association and all legislative platforms going forth from now. Personally, my report is to echo what so many of the Board Members have said, and that is, in the spirit of Thankfulness Week and Gratefulness, I just want to express my thanks and my gratefulness to each of you and to everyone in our community for the support that you lend to this school board as we go about the work of making sure all of our students have the opportunity to succeed. Gratefulness is a small word, but it carries a lot and I say it from my heart. And I wish for all of you a very blessed time with family and friends over this holiday time. We look forward to being back in December where we will have children performing again, which is always my favorite part because we are all about children. So, I look forward to that. But wish for all of you a very nice time with your family and friends over this Thanksgiving break. That concludes our Board Member comments and we will now move to the portion in our agenda where we have our scheduled speakers. We have three scheduled speakers to come before us today. And I would ask first for Ms. Diane Terrado to come forth. And let me remind you, as a scheduled speaker, you have five minutes to address the Board. Our Attorney, Mr. Harrell, will be our timekeeper and he will give you a little bit of warning before your five minutes are up. But at the end of the five minutes, I would ask that you cease your comments. And if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Diane Terrado, 3502 Southwest Volmer Street, Port St. Lucie.
And welcome to the podium.
Thank you. I'm very nervous. I'm here, I'm actually as a parent and as a former teacher for you. And I'm here to stress my concern with the giving of fifties in place of no work turned in. And I want to stress clearly, I mean, no work turned in. Because I have worked for many years as a teacher and the no zero policy, that fifty percent was for one child. Children tried and they still couldn't make the grade, so we gave them a platform, a foundation so that they went and synced so far. But they had to try. And it's happening now across St. Lucie County, as well as I found out across our nation, is that we're giving kids fifties for nothing. They get suspended, they don't want to do it, and they're not doing it and we still give them the fifty. So, what happens then is that kids are very, very smart and they go, "Well, if I have a fifty, I can make the D and I can get to the graduation part very easily if I start off with a fifty." I have went, my own daughter goes to your schools and she goes to an A school, and I went to a meeting there and I said, "I don't want you giving my kid a fifty." And I was going to start crying because I really mean it. I want her to earn her grades on her merit. I want her to not be entitled. I want her to have a backbone that if she fails, she picks herself up and works harder. And that's how I feel as a teacher also. By nature, teachers work their butts off to get kids to turn in this piece of paper. We make twenty thousand copies, we call the parents, we have makeup days, we do an awful lot just to get that piece of paper in. And we take some things that are crazy, okay, but we still take it. And then we give them the fifty because, you know what? You tried, you got it in my hand. Well, what's happening is I'm having children, "I'm not doing it and you still have to give me a fifty." Which made Ms. Terrado say, "No, I'm not going to do it, I'm going to have to fight." I lost a job I love. I mean, love with all my heart. And I couldn't live with it. I asked that I could just leave a blank as a missing assignment. I was told, "No, I'm not allowed." So, I kept saying, "No." And I said, "No" louder. And I had worked for this county prior years and it was not in the curriculum at all that you had to do that. So, I had no idea going into the job I was going into that it existed. If it did, I would have not taken the job because it's not something I can live with. And then it was confirmed, thank you, Ms. LeFante, for confirming that it was happening not just at the school I was working in, but at other schools in this county. And then I also got it confirmed where my daughter was and, you know, I did not want to get fired. I did not want to make enemies. I wanted policy change. I told that to my Assistant Principal. I said, "I have nothing against you personally, I just can't live with your policy." Because we're not helping our kids. They're not even, I'm a business owner. I can't find good help. Because they want, they want, have the expectation that just because they're here that they're going to get paid. It's very difficult to find workers. Well, that's because we're creating it. We are creating this kind of person by entitling them. And the buck has to stop here and I don't, I guess this is what my calling was, was to keep speaking because it's not okay. Okay, I don't really have much else, I'm repeating myself. But I thank you for listening to me. I thank you for looking me in the eye. And I just need you to understand that this person in front of you really loves teaching and really loves kids and really wants nothing but the best for them. But somebody's going to fail sometimes. It happens. And they're going to become better because of that failure because they're going to work harder. And I don't want you to baby my kid. So, if I can't teach, I can't teach. But don't do it to my kid. I don't want her being passed along. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Terrado. We appreciate your comments and coming before us today. Our second scheduled speaker is Betty Jo Stark. Stark, again, a reminder of the five-minute time limit and if you would state your name and address. Might need to click that down a little bit.
All right, can you hear me okay? Not too loud? Am I good? Good morning, everybody. Betty Jo Stark, S-T-A-R-K-E is my name. I am a Floridian. I have lived in St. Lucie County since nineteen eighty-six. I am a product of the Florida education system as well as IRSC graduate, graduate and University of Florida as well. Okay, what I'm here for today is to discuss the state of education. And if you want to know how I got here, I could tell you at the end. It's about the nuts and bolts of learning. Can you all hear, can you all hear me? Okay, all right. Too much is put in the abstract in theory and not enough is in the substance. Too much focus is on feelings and emotions and not enough on character building as responsible, thank you, as responsible citizens of the future. Too much focus is on revisionism, none of how we got to where we are. We cannot take back the past, nor are we responsible for the actions of others, meaning our ancestors. Our history of settlers, Declaration of Independence, Constitution, Bill of Rights, and Amendments are the best that mankind in recorded history have done for themselves. There is no utopia. It is incumbent upon us, our generation, to prepare the next generations for competitive, for a competitive world. We are failing at this. When we dumb it down, we do a disservice to each child. Some are faster learners than others, all have potential. When you change the act of education by making victim classes, no one wins except the administrators who perpetuate their feathered nest. No disrespect intended. Publishers are permitted and encouraged to print revisionism. School boards buy this erroneous slant bias, omissions of fact, factual errors, and nothing of substance occurs. America falls behind in a competitive world because we teach victimhood and touchy-feely with no logic, reasoning, history, math, writing, and reading. They don't know how to think. We have failed as a district of schools, as administrators, as a state, as a nation, and our generation. This is not to fault teachers who are doing their life's work and providing for their families when sometimes unions, I belong to a union myself, have priority over what happens in the class. We lose our passion to teach. It becomes about putting in your years and getting out. We can do better each day. You wake up, you get a new chance. Children need discipline and guidelines. They need to speak, read, write, and communicate. If youth from another country or financial status or neighborhood come to our mandated taxpayer-funded schools, we need to teach the lessons and they must focus on learning. The ego stroking and marketing to our youth need to be discarded for serious substance. Facts and truths will carry us further than flash and feely. And at what point are we, the school boards, schools, and students responsible to those who pay the bills, the taxpayers? So, if it's, if the outcome is not a thinking, a thinking group of students who really know how to logic, think logically, they don't know about Cisera, they don't know about any of the old-fashioned stuff. Okay, how did I get here? You want to know how I got here? I do proofreading for textbooks and I'm looking at some of the things that McGraw-Hill and Pearson are putting out. I have gone into the classroom with Constitution Day, which I consider a privilege and a pleasure. That's where I got the energy from the youth and I wanted so much, I had my four years' worth of, but I just needed that degree. So, I went in to take my degree for Intro to Teaching and I had to quit because of personal health reasons. But we didn't even get to the point, okay? We just, the whole, the whole essence of the class was about, about this one's a victim because of this and this one's about that. So, we lost the point of what is the substance that we really have to teach them to succeed. We got to beat out China, we got to beat out Japan, we've got to beat out everybody, Ireland, everybody in the rest of the world. So, that's why I'm here, because I care, okay? I appreciate all of your work. Thank you and thanks for letting me speak. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Stark. We appreciate your comments as well and spending some time with us today. Our third and final scheduled speaker is April Patterson. Ms. Patterson, we welcome you to the podium. Just to reiterate the five-minute time limit and if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is April Patterson. Address is eleven thirteen Southwest Hogan Street, Port St. Lucie, three four nine eight three. Got a lot of addresses. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. As you know, my name's April. I'm a proud parent of a second-year St. Lucie student. Originally, I was here to speak on exceptional student policies. However, when I called to place, to be placed on the speakers list, I was informed that the meeting was changed. I was taken back because this was only a week away from the originally scheduled meeting. And no public notice, change, scheduling, cancellation, anything was posted. Unfortunately, this isn't the first time I've encountered this problem. Last November, there was barely even a twenty-four-hour notice of the meeting date that was changed. Coincidentally, that was also a double, triple meeting situation as well. Now, I am aware that you all can change meetings, you know, and schedule it however you want. But to schedule a meeting on a Tuesday morning Thanksgiving week is a little bit outlandish, selfish if anything else. I understand that you're mandated to be here, however, I'm not paid to be here. I have to take off so that I can address the Board regarding, you know, concerns as a public figure. The district complains about not having enough parent and community participation and then turn around and do this. So, what does the district really want and what message are you guys really sending here to the public? I can tell you the message I received, but it wouldn't be appropriate for this Board, for this platform. I'd like to suggest to the Board, you know, especially as this district continues to grow and change, to appoint some sort of human relations personnel. I don't know if one already exists, but I'm public, I'm trying to create a relationship and I don't know who to go to. Somebody that can actually go out to the schools, show up to events, listen to the public, teaches principles, and help us to understand what's going on during these meetings and what's being conducted, the purpose of the meeting. It's hard enough for us to try to learn this new Common Core math for our kids, but to come to these meetings and, you know, hear a bunch of yays and nays when the policies are not posted, you know, in an appropriate time for us to do our research to see what it is you guys are doing and what it is that's being passed. Maybe it's just me, I don't know. Last year, I asked for that transparency at another public notice meeting, but here we are today. So, I'm not really sure how much, you know, you guys really care about us sitting at this microphone and speaking, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, so long as there is a platform and a microphone for me to talk on, I will speak because I'm always going to be a parent before anything else that I do in this world. I am a wife, I am a nurse, but I am a parent first. That's just how it is. So, I don't plan on taking that five minutes. I just want to say that I don't know if you guys take public opinion very seriously. But if you don't, that's not only dangerous for our children, but it's dangerous for our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson, for coming and speaking with us today. We have no other scheduled or unscheduled speakers to come before us today. So, again, let me wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving week with your family and friends. And we look forward to being back in a week for our pre-winter break time with our students. And thank you very much for being here today. We are adjourned.